Approval of the agenda.
Some with seconds.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. The prayer this evening will be given by Vice Mayor Gann. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you don't mind, before we say the prayer, I'd like to have a moment of silence. A real good guy in Clinton passed away and has had generations of the real dry cleaner. He's probably been in business, White Bill, 30s or 40s on that. Early 60s, long time.
Long time.
But Michael Schrader passed away and he'll be missed and we lost, we lost a good one.
Our Father, we thank thee for the blessings that you give us. We thank thee for the ability to live in a place like Clinton, Tennessee, for the people and for the opportunities we have. We're blessed with great people who've served the city and who add to the fabric of our, of our community. We pray that you be with us and that you help us to continue that idea. We know that there are people in the world that are hurting. We pray especially for those people in Hawaii and for the violence that's happening around our country, Father. We pray that you would bring peace, that you would bring restitution and restoration for all that we have going on. Lead, guide and direct us now as we make decisions and as we seek to do the will of the people. For in thy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Larry. Do I hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated July 31st, 2023?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. This time we'll recognize any visitors, citizens here. We just ask the limit to one appearance per topic with a three-minute time limit. Anybody like to speak? Yes ma'am. Just state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Savannah Mead. I live at 146 Garden Road in Norris, but I work at 131 South Charles Severs Boulevard at ASAP of Anderson. I'm a prevention coordinator over there. I know you all have probably received an invitation in the mail and probably an email from Executive Director Shayla Wilson, but I wanted to invite you all one last time to our International Overdose Awareness Day event on this Thursday from 11:30 to 1:00. It's going to be at First Baptist Church. We're really looking forward to this event. Not only are we taking the day to honor the 91 lives that were lost in Anderson County due to overdose in 2021, we're also honoring the first responders and EMTs, the ones who are responding to these overdose calls in our community, carrying Narcan, saving lives, bringing that number of deaths down. So, we're really looking forward to this event. We hope you all can make it out and thank you all very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes sir. Please state your name and address.
My name's John Two. I'm at 320 Maple Street, right here in Clinton. And I just wrote out something. I wanted to recommend that the City of Clinton reconsideres the city ordinance regarding the keeping of hens or female chickens on a homeowner's property. Currently, the ordinance states, no person shall keep or allow any other animal or fowl enumerated in the preceding section, which includes chickens, to come within 1,000 feet of any residence, place of business or public street, as measured in a straight line. So, I'd just like to bring to attention the fact that the City of Knoxville allows homeowners to have six hens on their properties, no matter the size of the property. And you could refer to Section 5-107 in their city ordinance on domesticated chickens. There are various parameters around that allowance in Knoxville of hens being kept, such as the following. They must be kept in a fenced enclosure at all times, must be put up in a fully enclosed hen house. The hen house and pen must be properly maintained, et cetera. So, there's reasonable expectations for a community have around the keeping of their hens and loving their neighbor in how we do so. So, I also believe it's our God-given right and obligation for a man to be able to provide food for his family. Our society here in the United States has gotten used to being able to depend and rely on grocery stores to supply their food. However, just a few years ago during the season of COVID, there was a shortage of many different food supplies, eggs being one of them. I want to take ownership of at least some of my family's food provision by having egg-laying hens. So, hens kept properly are not a disturbance to neighbors, but rather can be a blessing since a healthy and happy producing flock can yield excess eggs to be given to neighbors. So, I, I don't know the next step, if you could refer me to someone, but I'd love to just at least have the city reconsider the ordinance and maybe just look at the ordinance in the City of Knoxville, just, you know, being reasonable with keeping of hens.
Roger, be the next step for him.
One, the ordinance already has changed. It's now refers to acreage, not the thousand feet, but it would first, it would have to go to planning commission. Planning commission would make the recommendation to council. So, you'd start with planning commission.
What is the acreage currently now?
Three.
Three acres, three acre lot.
If we could get down to two, I'm on two.
Well, it would, you would have to go before planning commission. And they, they would, they would look at it first and make a recommendation to council.
Very good. Thank you, Gann.
Thank you.
Doesn't our current standard allow two?
Two hens?
Oh.
Hmm. No, okay. I thought, I was thinking of something else.
Yes ma'am. State your name and address, please.
My name is Marietta Jan Wilson, 608 Hendrix's Street, Clinton, Tennessee. I come before you all today because I've got a problem with the signage that has been put up on Market Street. I know Clinton 12 is one of the signage, but a lot of the other signage portrays only white people. I don't know who is in charge of this signage, but I come to a council meeting to state that I think we had black businesses in Clinton that was not portrayed. And we had other things besides just the Clinton 12 that needs to be portrayed as well. If we could put a lot of signage of just white people down there, why couldn't we can't put signage of all people down there, blacks, anybody else that was in Clinton at that time? And why does it have to be from the eras of 19 and 10? Why couldn't we couldn't done something up to date? I mean, I think it's, it's gone just a little bit too far. It needs to either come from the past to the future. There was nothing wrong with the old signage that we had, the banners that we had hanging, but they wanted to do something else in there. Some of those banners down there, the people just didn't need to be on them. Thank you.
Anyone else? Communications from the mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank the Anderson County Commission to partner with us when paving the industrial park at Eagle Bend. That's why I'm trying to think JD Arnold. We've had this from the beginning and we continue to have a strong partnership as far as supporting our industry. So, certainly appreciate them for stepping up and helping us or partnering with us with this endeavor. Also, I'd like to thank former councilman or alderman, a former county commissioner. Bob Jameson's birthday is today. He's 86 years old. And Bob's told me for 10 years, he doesn't buy green bananas anymore. So, I think he's doing pretty good. Some of y'all won't get that, but Bob, you know Bob, he's cut up. So, I wanted to publicly say happy birthday to him. That's all I have. Moving on to committee reports. City School Board Report, Kelly Johnson.
Good evening. A few couple of updates regarding Clinton City Schools. As we at first and foremost are back in action. So, we are finishing up several weeks back into school. So, we've settled into a fabulous schedule. Our enrollment is fairly consistent this year as it has been over the past couple of years. We are in K through six at 930 kids. And when you include pre-K into that, we're at about 963 kids. And so, that fluctuates a few each day with people moving in and out. But that's pretty steady with where we have been in years past. And that's kind of the size that we, as David knows, want to, want to remain. We want to make sure that we stay under that thousand threshold with our new funding formula. I'm very proud to announce that our, as you know, we get back data within waves and our achievement data comes out, but then also we have our student growth data that is called TVOS. And basically, that's a measure of how we have taken each kid and did we grow that kid where they were at least one academic year. So, certainly with our low kids, we want to grow more than academic year. But with our kids that come in already on grade level, it's our job to grow them as well. So, proud to report that they give five levels. And so, our district was a level five again this year in terms of our TVOS student growth, which is the highest level that you can receive. And if I'm not mistaken, this is the 10th year in a row that we have been a level five school district. So, something very, very proud. Teachers have worked hard, kids have worked hard, parents have worked hard. So, it's been definitely a partnership. And so, we're shouting that from the, from the rooftops right now. Then I also wanted to let you know about a new Blaze activity that we have that we are starting this year that we are super excited about. We are embarking on a sixth grade rocket drone racing team. And so, we have purchased rocket drones, little drones. And students in sixth grade will be going through a class of how the drones work and how they build the drone, how they maintain the drone. They'll learn how to fly the drone. And then we have large inflatable obstacle course that will go in the gym and they have to fly the drone on a certain obstacle route. And the super cool thing is they will be competing with other school districts across the state and even across the country online with their rocket drone racing program. And so, Kimberly Odell and Ginger Page have kicked that off for us. And she's doing interest clubs with Boys and Girls First, just to see who is interested in possibly trying out for the team. But we have enough drones for 18 sixth graders to participate in this program with a plan of starting it in fifth grade as a club where you learn how to do the drone. And then in sixth grade, you actually do the, do the competitions. So, we are super excited. If you do this long enough, if our goal would be to do a pipeline from elementary all the way through the high school. But if you do it long enough, you could actually graduate with your drone license, which businesses are dying for people who can fly drones. So, super excited about that. And then Blaze has kicked off with full force with basketball tryouts. Coach Little has done his first tryout today where 41 boys showed up to try out for the basketball team. So, good luck with that, Coach Little. I know that's going to be fun decisions. But we have cheer, dance, cross-country, swim, color guard and tennis in action. So, tennis is new this year. If those of you who happen to remember Rick and Marlene Moore, Marlene used to be a teacher at Anderson County High School. Melissa Moore, their daughter, has actually moved back to Clinton and she owned a tennis business in Wilmington, North Carolina for children. And so, she is bringing that and we are contracting with her to do Blaze Tennis. And it starts as young as pre-K. So, we will have pre-K and kindergartners on the tennis courts at Lakefront this week, which is going to be super fun. So, any questions for me?
Do you want to have a budget amendment?
No budget amendment today. Too early in the year.
Any questions for, that's a good point. Any questions for Kelly? Kelly, as the new year has begun, is, how's the sickness? I've been hearing things nationally about some things going on. Are y'all about normal or?
I would prefer for you not to ask that question because if I say things are going good right now, you're going to jinx it. But no, we're, we're fine. I mean, we're seeing the typical, when we all get back together after being away from the summer, we always see a little spike of some viruses and stuff, but nothing, nothing of concern at this point, but I'm going to knock on the podium.
Right. Thank you. Clinton Regional Planning Commission Report, Vice Mayor Gann.
The Clinton Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission met on Monday, August 14th. Both, they met at 5 o'clock to do some planning and we're going to meet again next month at 5 o'clock to look at some specifics that we feel like may need to be addressed. But in the matter of business, applicant Hugh Ray Hubs requesting rear setback variance from 5 feet to zero feet for property located at Harbor Drive, property is zoned R1. This piece of property runs up against the TVA guidelines. And what, as you can see there, the adjoining property's TVA development is not permitted. Staff stated this is a self-created variance, but if the board were open to the request, the adjoining TVA land would make this a unique situation that would establish, that would not establish a precedent for other similar requests. In other words, because there is a unique variance there, he's still going to have a good bit of land between himself and the, and the river. And this was a unique situation not to be precedent for others that might follow. Each of those would have to be handled on a per case basis. But there is still a variance there. It just happens to be the river. Applicant McGrew Engineering Surveying requesting variance for lot width from 75 feet to 62 and a half feet for property located at 514 Cherokee Avenue, property is zoned R2. This is a property division. The frontage is 125 feet. This would not afford subdividing into two lots and maintaining the 75-foot lot width. So, the Board of Zoning Appeals agreed to allow a reduction to 62.5 feet so that they could establish two lots instead of one. Then the Regional Planning Commission, applicant Wade Lovin, surveyor requests final approval, review and approval for property located at 2090 Charles G. Severs Boulevard. This is a final plat approval for, to subdivide, excuse me, to subdivide a lot of record into two lots. These are the type of things that in the future will probably be on a consent situation and we won't be dealing with those other than as a combination. Let's see. Applicant Thomas Hicks requesting final plat review and approval for property located at Hillvale Road. This is for a storage facility above Walmart on Hillvale Road. There's been some discussion about stormwater runoff. There's been discussion about, is there a need for a dumpster? Is, is there a need for a restroom or sewer facilities? Right now, there is no need for sewer facilities or a bathroom. I think there's still some consideration about whether a dumpster or some garbage site should be included. The stormwater issue is probably going to be dealt with by the county because this piece of property does join the county up there. So, it was approved subject to jumping through those hoops. Applicant McGrew Engineering and Surveying requesting final plat review and approval for property located at 514 Cherokee Avenue. This was the final proposal for to subdivide a lot of record into two lots. That's the one that we had before. And then applicant McGrew Engineering and Surveying requesting final plat review and approval for property located at Weldwood Drive. This too was a re-division and it divided the property into four lots. And then lastly, Michael Brady requesting site plan review and approval for the property located at the corner of Hicks and Main Street. This is the new Anderson County Chamber of Commerce building. There was some discussion about stormwater runoff, but they're actually going to do a SWIF, which is the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. And that has been submitted to the state. So, subject to that being acceptable to the state and to the stormwater guidelines, it was approved by the Planning Commission. Any questions?
Any questions for Vice Mayor Gann? Thanks Larry. We don't have a CUB report this evening. Other board and committee reports, do you have anything? Catherine?
Good evening. I want to start by doing something that I don't normally do. I want to give a big shout out to JB and the Parks and Rec Department. They helped us a lot over the last couple of weeks to get some banners up around the downtown area. And it actually allowed us to have more banners to highlight Clinton's history around town. So, because the city partnered with us and Parks and Recs did that, we were able to do a little bit more with that. So, I am excited that the banners are up. I know that there was a comment about some of the diversity that was on those banners. We, we only have about half of them up right now. So, we do have a few more. We have one of the Clinton 12s. She said, we also have one of Albert Turner, who was a city councilman and police officer in the town. And we're happy to listen to any feedback on those as well. We also partnered with the Clinton City Tree Board and received another urban forestry grant, which I'm excited about. So, we'll have about 30 new trees that will be parked, planted at the dog park this fall. So, give those puppies some more shade and relief out there as well. September 9th is when the, the Air National Guard Band will be in the downtown area. Thank you to Clinton City Schools who is partnering with, with us. They're going to do a really nice backdrop for the stage. That's a thank you to all the veterans that are visiting and also in our community. Tasty Tuesdays will be starting again. We'll have four weeks of food trucks in the downtown area, starting on September 12th. And then we have the Fall Festival coming up. So, that's looking to be another really big event, October 6th and 7th. We're also partnering again with VIP Knoxville as the construction gets closer. We thought it would be a good idea to do another big push in this magazine that reaches within a 50-mile radius to a lot of people who could come to the downtown area. This is allowing the businesses in our, in our area to have a discounted rate to advertise their own business. But it's also allowing us to do one big push for the Christmas season before construction happens.
Any questions for Catherine?
Catherine, do we have a time table on the Terrific Hill construction?
Yes. So, the trees have been ordered and they will be planted this fall. And then the art installation should go in by the end of the year.
Anything else? Thanks Catherine.
Thank you.
General Government Report, Mr. Houck.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we get started, Mayor, I'd like to ask Ms. Wilson, if you would, on the banners, if you could maybe bring some suggestions or recommendations by to my office sometime in the next week or two. And that, that way, next time, I'll get it to the right parties. Next time we do some banners, I can get them suggestions of what maybe we could put on them. If you'll bring me a list. Okay, good deal. Current projects and activities, just an update on the JC Park Water Park Splash Pad Pool. We did have a pre-bid meeting last week and we did have a good turnout. We had actually six contractors show up. So, we had a good, good turnout at that. We did push the bid opening out to September the 11th, just to give them more time to look at it, do walkthroughs and get everything put together. So, we anticipate a good, good turnout there. So, bid opening will be September the 11th. So, that was a good turnout and we were, we were happy with that. General Government, Building Renovations in Addition, City Hall. After reeval, after reevaluating the bid submittal for the project, it has been determined that there was not an error in the original submittal for Fire Station 1. Therefore, we need to revise the recommendations previously submitted. We recommend that you rescind the approval granted at the July 31st, 23, 2023 meeting and make the following recommendations for contract award for each project. City Hall restroom renovations to Thomas R. Hicks Construction for $215,500. Fire Station 1 Training Tower demolition and reconstruction to GCE Construction for $289,312. And Fire Station 2 Apparatus Bay to Thomas R. Hicks Construction for $375,100.
So, we need to make a motion to rescind first.
Rescind last month, one, because we, we voted everything together last month. We need to rescind that one and then vote on these three.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to rescind? Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
I'll make the motion to approve all three of what Senator just said there, A, B and C.
If we can do that.
Yeah.
Is that right to do it that way?
Combine all three.
Well, we, that's why we did it last time that way.
Can we combine all three? They need to be separate.
Since we've got them correct now, I think all three combined would be separate.
Yeah. Okay. Combine all three then.
Have a motion?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance, it's for Chris.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. So, at the end of July, we're one month into our new fiscal year or 8% of the way through. Our revenues are at 2.9%, which is not a, not unexpected as the bulk of our revenue come in, comes in in the fall and winter. We're at 7.5% of our expenditure, so we're on track there. Regarding sales tax, to finish up the fiscal year, we were at 2.26% above the same month last year. And we ended the year at 10.15% above last year overall for the 12 preceding months. So, we brought in 5.3 million in, in sales, local option sales tax for fiscal year '23. The only other thing I have for you is just to point out a, a letter from the Tennessee Comp Controller recognizing that we got our budget passed on time and with all the, all the boxes checked. They did mention in one section that there was not a revenue forecast, which I don't understand because I believe there was one. But if you see that and have any concerns, please reach out to me. I'm going to reach out to them and ask them what it was they saw that we didn't, we didn't do. But I believe everything is, was truly there. So, we're in good shape with, with the state.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Just update on the paving. We have submitted purchase orders both for JD Arnold and Mayor Point Drive. Dwayne, I didn't get to talk to you today, but any updates from Rogers Group on that?
Talked to him today and he didn't have a time.
So, right now, we're at the mercy of Rogers Group on our paving.
How are we looking on the tennis courts? Is that going to be this fall or?
We talked to the contractor last week and they are telling us they're covered up. So, we're trying to get on their schedule for early spring. We know the one company that's probably the best price or the option is go out to bid, but we're afraid that we may not get as good a price. We kind of discussed it last week before we went to the conference. So, we're, we're trying. JB, any, any new updates?
No, no. Besides what I talked to you the other day about, trying to get a quote from the guy. He's booked through the first of the year and he could possibly get us in the spring after their season. But it just seems like everybody's got things going on.
Mm-hmm.
We're on kind of a back burner on that right now.
Well, I hope I've talked to Roger about this a few times. And pickleball, there's a lot of conversations about that. And hopefully, when we, when we do, when we redo those courts, especially at Lakefront, maybe look at doing all three of those and converting those. You with me?
Oh, I'm definitely with you.
All right. We got to talk to the, the city manager about that?
No.
All right.
Well, I'm almost to the point where I think we may need to look at separate pickleball. I mean, with tennis, with, with the schools using it, the elementary school, or doing, doing tennis too. I mean, we got, especially in the springtime of the year, we got so many of the schools using our tennis courts. I think they will be, be tied up quite a bit. I don't know. And, and I was at the symposium this week with, with two other Parks and Rec director from Greenville and, and Maryville. And we, we had a discussion with JB about it. And, you know, it's, it may be that we, we try to find, whether it be at the Dog Park or somewhere, get some land and, and try to build three or four. I guess four would be the most convenient and, and look at it separate. I know JB, what were you telling me, Teleco Plains?
Teleco Village.
Teleco Village had a nice one. The other one, I know the letter that, that you received, Mayor, that the lady was really interested, maybe at the senior center. And I don't know if there's any land down there that we could possibly look at a partnership with the, the county and putting some at the senior center. That may be an adventure that we look at.
Well, I've noticed that the, I hear what you're saying about the tennis, but you know, really it's a really about six-week period when, when it's really crowded with, with, after that is, you know, it's pretty empty.
Definitely if we, if we, if we get to re-surface them, that it'd be something that the company could re-stripe it, to probably do both.
Yeah.
Would be.
So, you could have the same court for both.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you could.
Okay, just checking. Anything?
That's all I've got.
Um, before we get into ordinances, you want to go ahead and talk about codification? You want to have that conversation?
Let's just go ahead and do it because Gil's here to help me and.
Any, any questions for Roger? Thanks Roger. Under first readings of new ordinances, ordinance number 679, this is an ordinance adopting and enacting a comprehensive codification and revision of the ordinances of the City of Clinton, Tennessee. Your motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion and second. Any further discussion?
This is something that we've actually been working on probably for 10 to 12 years. We sent out a little memo today kind of explaining it, but I can kind of go down a list of most, most of them and kind of give you just a reader's digest version. One reason we picked to do it, we knew we had a lot of agenda tonight. So, we thought it'd be a good meeting to go ahead and do it and get it done. And like I said, it's just kind of a highlight of it. Section 1. Section 1102, which is the Order of Business, that ordinance we're changing, just kind of to update the ordinance book to do the way that we're doing business. Section 1301, which is the Surety Bonds of Officers and Employees, that was a very vague, and so we made it a more detailed ordinance, actually, toward the city manager and financial director, both has a $100,000 bond, and the city recorder has a $50,000 bond. General Administration, this is Title 1 of Section 301 and Title 3. This is something that probably five or six years ago, that Mayor and Council, you asked us to look at, that dealt with the city attorney and city judge. This made the city attorney to be appointed the same way the city judge was to be appointed, and it also put them on a four-year term, and they are to be reappointed at the January meeting, starting the third year of a mayor's term. So they can be reappointed every four years, and that was something that, if y'all remember, a discussion that we had several years ago. Title 4 of the Municipal Personnel, Chapter 1 Code of Ethics, that was moved to Chapter 5. Title 4, Chapter 2 Social Security was deleted completely. That was a recommendation by M. Task. It just didn't apply anymore. Title 5 Municipal Finance and Taxation, Sales Tax, that was deleted completely. That is now controlled by the state, so that does not apply anymore. Once again, state statute controls that. Title 7 Fire Protection, we add it to Chapter 5, which is the fire key boxes, the Knox boxes. 8 to 10 Class of Permits, we add it Class C on-site to include food truck parks. Title 9 Business Peddlers and Solicitors, we delete it, Chapter 2 Taxi Cabs. Once again, it didn't apply anymore. We've not had taxi cabs forever. Title 11 Municipal Offenses, Chapter 1 Misdemeanors of State Adopted, Chapter 3 Gambling, Fortune Tellers, Chapter 5 Interference with Public Operations of Personnel. We deleted all of that because it was in conflict with state law and is actually covered under state law. This, once again, was an M. Task recommendation. Title 12 Building Utilities, Et cetera Codes, Chapter 4 Unsafe Building Abatement Code, and Chapter 11 Amusement Device Codes, we deleted all of that. This is covered under other codes. Once again, this was an M. Task recommendation. Chapter 14 Zoning and Land Use, Chapter 2 through 13, delete it in reference into Ordinance 680, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. This will be maintained by the zoning office as a live, separate document. Title 16 Streets and Sidewalks, Chapter 3 Parades was deleted. Now it's covered under Title 20. This was moved under Special Events. Title 17 Refuge and Trash Disposal, that was updated to our current operation. Title 19 Remove the Electricity From This Title. Title 20 Clinton Fire Housing Opportunity Ordinance moved to Title 9. Title 20, Chapter 1 Cable Television was deleted, that is now regulated by the state. Title 20, Chapter 2 Special Events and Alarm System Regulations was added. Like I said, that's about a 10-year project, getting all that done and to where it needed to be.
Any further discussion? Any questions for Roger?
Questions for Gail, because she's really the one that put in a majority of the work on it.
It's been a long and arduous process. We appreciate your work that you put into this.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Councilman Clinton?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mayne?
Yes.
And Mayor Burton?
Yes. Ordinance number 679 passes on first of two readings. Ordinance number 680, an ordinance to amend Title 14, Chapters 2 through 13 of the Clinton, I'm sorry, of the City of Clinton Municipal Code. Your motion for approval?
No move.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any further discussion? Roger?
And what this does, this actually brings the land use within the City of Clinton, the code out of this other code, and makes it a live document, makes it a separate zoning document that will be maintained as, as I said, a separate document, and just be easier to maintain. Bill, did I explain that right?
Yes, what that does, it will, since it has changed more frequently than any of the other codes, it will allow us to be maintained separately, but you can amend that ordinance and keep it up to date and the publication is current, whereas the municipal code is only updated in print every year, two years, depending on the volume of the ordinances. So this sort of streamlines that process. It still requires the same actions for approval, require the Planning Commission approval and recommendation to counsel for passage, but it just keeps it as a separate document.
So nothing was done in regards to zoning? It was just, this action is just, we're separating it from?
Right, separate, and that way it can be managed and kept up to date more easily.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion?
I do have a question, because I was reading through it, because I'm still learning all these codes, but I was looking at one on page 16, and it's 2.0, and then it's 2.1, number 2, and it talks about when a building is vacant and it's not being used, no customers, no employees or clients. How are we going to them to make sure that these buildings are, you know, if they're not being used, are they being, is the code being enforced? Because we have a lot of buildings that, well, especially in South Clinton, that are not being used at all, or no customers, no business used, and then I didn't know how we are enforcing that.
That's probably a good Matt question. We could follow up with, would that be right, Roger?
Yeah.
Follow up for that.
I know in the past, there have been inspections done, I don't know how recently, to make sure that they maintain code.
Okay.
I don't know how recently, though. I think it was under the previous.
Yeah, that is the non-conforming use section. And as long as the building is vacant, if it is in properly zoned, it can stay vacant for any period of time.
Okay.
But where that comes into play is if the use is not compatible with the zone, and then that's, that's where that comes in, but it is, it's hard to keep up with.
Okay, thank you.
Again, I think that's one thing that Larry and I, of course, on the Planning Commission, now that this is separate, you know, my goal, I think the Planning Commission's total goal is to start reviewing all the zoning and all the codes and take the recommendation from staff and Matt to give us recommendations on that, because there are some things within the code that needs to be changed or updated.
Okay.
And that's where Matt's working on a nuisance ordinance, right? And how to tighten it up, so it would go in this ordinance instead of going in the total ordinance, it would just go in this.
So whatever the Planning Commission approves, it comes back to Council.
Oh, yeah, it would be the same process.
Same ordinance change, two readings, so.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully, that one will take 10 or 12 years. I don't think anybody's going to be on that Planning Commission that long.
Hopefully, we'll get some of those vacant buildings, too.
That's right, that's right. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Clinton?
Yes.
Councilman, Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker? Councilwoman Mayne?
Yes.
And Mayor Burton?
Yes. Ordinance number 680 passes on first of two readings. No second and final readings, no resolutions. Any old business before us? Any new business before us?
I do have something else I would like to bring up. You know, we all got that email from the lady that lives on Ridgeview, and she was concerned about all of the speeding and accidents that have happened, and I've talked to Mayor Burton, and I have proposed that maybe we have a traffic engineer look at that, because it is a serious issue, and if she talks to anybody up and down that street, they can tell you, it's like a raceway. Nobody pays attention to that little sign that tells them to slow down, and I've driven down that road and had an accident myself on there, so I propose that we look at getting a traffic engineer in there and seeing if we can't help these citizens slow, slow the people down.
I agree, I agree. Appreciate it, thank you. Anybody else enter new business? Motion to adjourn? Means adjourn.